This is a regular city council meeting of the City of Ocean Shores. It is July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is six P. M. The meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. The meetings are simulcast and archived on K O S W radio. Meetings are live streamed with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. The meetings can be viewed on cable channel sixty-eight on Thursdays at twelve P. M. and Sundays at ten A. M. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sires?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Gribel?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wills?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here. All right, thanks. Lisa Scott, can you lead us in the Pledge of Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands before the Senate, the House, and the Senate. The Constitution provides us with the right to the Constitution, the Constitution and the Constitution. I would like to make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. So ceremonies and proclamations, we have some that are going to be spoken by Allison Klein. So go ahead, Allison.
Our first one is a proclamation by the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, with the mayor concurring proclaiming August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five as National Night Out in the City of Ocean Shores, Washington. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique national crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the forty-second Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, the City of Ocean Shores plays a vital role in supporting National Night Out two thousand and twenty-five locally. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of Ocean Shores be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city. And whereas, police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, with the mayor concurring, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city to join the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the forty-second Annual National Night Out on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Further, let it be resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, with the mayor concurring, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Night Out in the City of Ocean Shores, Washington. Our second proclamation, a proclamation by the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, with the mayor concurring proclaiming August first, second, and third, two thousand and twenty-five, as Pride Weekend in the City of Ocean Shores, Washington. Whereas, Pride Month began in June nineteen sixty-nine, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, after LGBTQ-plus persons and their allies rose up to fight against discriminatory laws, which have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, Ocean Shores denounces prejudiced and unfair discrimination based on age, race, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression, and is a city in which all persons should feel valued, safe, welcomed, respected, and affirmed by their peers and the community. And whereas, all are welcome in Ocean Shores to live, work, and play, and every family in all of its various forms deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, Ocean Shores appreciates the value and dignity of each person, recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and acknowledges the positive contributions made by members of the LGBTQ-plus community to actively promote principles of equality, acceptance, and love. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, with the mayor concurring, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city to join the Annual Pride Weekend on August first, second, and third, two thousand and twenty-five. Further, let it be resolved, we, the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, with
Tax Advisory Committee, and one vacancy on the Airport Advisory Committee.
the mayor concurring, do hereby proclaim August first, second, and third in the City of Ocean Shores as Pride Weekend in the City of Ocean Shores, Washington.
We have no appointments, we don't have any other reports, so we'll move on to public comment. Right, can I get council consensus on this? Public comment is to council, to council is intended for communication to the City Council regarding general council business or policy not on tonight's agenda. National Night Out first, I guess?
Yes.
All right. And then on the Pride Weekend? Address comments or questions to the City Council body, not to an individual member
Yes.
All right. We're going to take a short break, ten minutes maybe, five minutes? or city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Ten-minute break, all right? We request the comments be nice and respectful. This is not a question-and-answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use a public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. The City Council will begin the time once the citizen has started their public comment. At two minutes, you will see a green light, followed by a yellow light indicating thirty seconds remain in the public comment period. The red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be first, individuals attending in person; second, individuals attending remotely. The general public comments, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the usual position on the agenda. Public comment for the agenda items that were removed will be addressed following the conclusion of the general public comment. We didn't have any of those, so who's up?
So we have four this evening, and the first is Jane Shattuck, public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jane Shattuck, Ocean Shores resident. I'd like to take a moment to speak about the purpose and integrity of our city council meetings. As outlined, as outlined in the city council's own guidelines, the purpose of the city council meeting is to conduct city business presented on the city council agenda. These meetings are first and foremost business meetings. They are meant to address city operations, local policy, and issues that directly impact the residents and functioning of our local government. When individuals use public comment time to voice opinions about national politics and other things not relevant to city business, it not only distracts from the city's work, it disrupts the flow of the meeting, wastes valuable time, and ultimately costs the city money, taxpayers' money. While I recognize and respect that individuals may feel strongly about national politics, political issues, and other issues, it's disrespectful to the council, to the staff who are here to conduct business, and residents who attend or tune in to hear about the matters that affect city operations. It becomes especially frustrating when someone makes a political statement unrelated to city business and then leaves before the actual city business even begins. Whether intentional or not, that behavior sends a message that they are not here to participate in or support their local government, they're here to grandstand. It's important to remember that the City of Ocean Shores is a nonpartisan government. Bringing national political rhetoric into space, however well-intended, risks creating unnecessary division and shifts focus away from depressing concerns our city is tasked with addressing, things like public safety, infrastructure, emergency services, and fiscal responsibility. I would also like to note, outlined, outlined in our council guidelines, it states public comments should be brief, to the point, and presented respectfully, and that they should be directed to the council, not staff or the audience. Unfortunately, this is, this isn't always followed, which can detract from the intended focus and structure of the meeting. I respectfully urge the council to consider reinforcing the intended focus of public comment. We should welcome all voices, but we should also expect that public input remains relevant, constructive, and connected to city matters. Our time, your time, and the city's resources deserve that respect. Now, on that note, I would also respectfully request that the city council allow public comment on this evening's discussion regarding council guidelines. Thank you very much.
I rise tonight as a walking, talking, public safety hazard, at least according to the city administrator. Back in January, he issued a code-red email to all city staff. The subject: me. The offense: apparently existing, while not being sued. In that email, I was declared off-limits, blacklisted, because I was supposedly, quote, "a party to a lawsuit," and, quote, "didn't have the best interests of the city at heart." Strong words, sounds serious, except it wasn't true. I'm not a plaintiff, not a defendant, I haven't filed a complaint, unless you count the muttering
All right, we'll keep the meeting rolling here with announcements, board and vacancy,
I do sometimes at council. The only thing I've done is exist in proximity to a potential legal case brought by a former
board and committee vacancies, let me get that out. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission, two vacancies on the Radio Board, one vacancy
city employee where I might, maybe, be a witness.
on the Parks Board, one vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy on the Lodging
Apparently, that's enough to justify a citywide gag order. I asked for clarification. What case? What court? What galaxy of fiction did this come from? Silence. I sent a registered letter, no reply. Maybe it got rerouted to the Department of Denial. So I filed a formal claim on March twelfth, asking the city to prove it or retract it. Ninety days later, the city responded with a single sentence: no merit, no liability. But let's be honest, the damage was done. A false statement by a city official in an official capacity sent to every employee, all because someone decided I was inconvenient? Let me be clear, I'm not the problem. The problem is a public official using public resources to spread a falsehood, and now pretending that none of it happened. Again, I ask this council respectfully, perhaps with a dash of audacity, to do what's right, acknowledge this statement was false, ask for a public apology, show that words still matter, and that leadership comes with accountability. Truth, transparency, and democracy are not optional accessories, they are the whole outfit. Thank you.
Nancy Milliman, follow-up on concerns.
I'm addressing some stated concerns during public comment of the July eighth council meeting. A citizen spoke of many concerns regarding the new speed bumps or cushions and their justification. He asked about studies and public input. I've been pursuing very actively this issue since two thousand and twenty-one, especially with city council public meetings. In September of twenty-one, I wrote to the, to Mayor Martin, city council members, public works director, police chief, code enforcement, addressing the number of heavy trucks using Dolphin Avenue. As per Ocean Shore city ordinance, it is not a legal truck route and was destroying Dolphin even further. At that time, council member Frank L. G. N. moved to install no truck signs on Dolphin, and it passed. Then in October twenty-two, just one year later, a petition was presented to current Mayor Martin and council, pleading for a stronger, more frequent law enforcement presence on Dolphin, as well as serious traffic calming devices, possibly speed cushions. Keep in mind that traffic logs, photos, and videos were provided, but not accepted. Then in January of twenty-three, a meeting was held with Mayor Martin, our police chief, city clerk, three council members, along with the majority of residents who signed that petition on Dolphin. These residents felt that they were heard and action would be taken. And then, in April of twenty-three, the city received a grant, five thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars for the radar signs that would be installed on Dolphin. The city contribution was one thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. But due to the R C Ws, these may not be photo radar, which is only permitted close to schools and intersections. To answer this concern, citizens' question, these radar signs were installed on Dolphin shortly thereafter. Therefore, in response to concerned citizens, as far as Dolphin is concerned, I can't answer for the other streets involved. I hope this assists in answering your questions of justification, even though this just applies to Dolphin. The residents initiated public outreach, traffic counters were installed for one week on Dolphin. What is seen has taken nearly four years due to many emails, communications with elected officials and city staff, which included national and international studies and surveys. And I do want to thank our council, mayor, and staff for all of their hard work. Thank you.
Sherri Dooley, getting back to where we should be.
Good evening, council and fellow residents. I want to take a moment to remind us all why we're here. City council meetings are meant to serve the people of Ocean Shores by focusing on the issues that directly affect us: public safety, water quality, infrastructure, tourism, budgeting, and responsible local governance. Lately, though, it feels like we've drifted off course. Public comment has become a stage for national political slogans and partisan speeches that have left, have little to do with the real challenges facing our city. I respect everyone's right to speak, but this space should remain focused on Ocean Shores, not national debates. We are not Congress. We're here to solve problems in our community. We've also heard claims that certain slogans aren't political, but let's be honest, phrases like "democracy depends on it" or "make America great again" clearly signal partisan affiliation. If we wouldn't tolerate one in this council meeting, we shouldn't promote the other. Fair is fair. Some confusion has also come up around voter registration. In Washington State, registration is nonpartisan. You don't declare a party and any voter registration, and any voter registration efforts, whether at an event or in an office, must remain strictly nonpartisan. Campaigning or political messaging at those booths isn't just inappropriate, it's illegal. If we're serious about keeping partisanship out of local government, we must apply that standard consistently, no matter what side of the aisle we're on. Ocean Shores deserves respectful, focused, and constructive dialogue about our town. We can disagree and we can debate, but let's do it on local terms, not with national slogans and political theater. I'd also like to offer a practical solution: move public comment to the end of the meeting. That way, we prevent unrelated political speeches from dominating our meetings. Finally, the council, you have the authority and responsibility to uphold the purpose of these meetings. That includes setting clear expectations for public comment. Leadership means protecting this space for what it was meant to be, a forum for serving Ocean Shores. So let's get back to just that, and I'd like to thank Chat G P T for helping me write this so I could keep it under three minutes.
That concludes public comment.
All right, we'll go on to staff reports. City Administrator report, Scott Anderson.
All right, good evening, council and citizens. I don't have anything written tonight because the last two days have been frantically busy, but I will tell you about what happened yesterday because I think it is a step for something that's very, very important that we're trying to, the mayor and I are trying to do, to kind of help move the city forward. And so yesterday, the mayor and I went to Seattle, we went up to the University of Washington, where we've been working with the livable city year program. And it's a program that incorporates architecture and design and built environment and spaces. And we're going to revisit the issue of sidewalks on Point Brown. And we'd like to make sure we don't make the, you know, the errors of the past. And so we were asking the U-Dub and several of its departments through livable city year to collaborate with us on a number of things. One, they would CAD design various alternatives for sidewalks, and we're looking at three of those. It would also incorporate beautification measures that would make our median look nicer, that would make the potential sidewalk Keep in mind that traffic logs, photos, and videos were provided, but not accepted. Then in January of '23, a meeting was held with Mayor Martin, our Police Chief, City Clerk, three council members, along with the majority of residents who signed that petition on Dolphin. These residents felt that they were heard and action would be taken. And then, in April of '23, the city received a grant, $5,934, for the radar signs that would be installed on Dolphin. The city contribution was $1,483.71. But due to the RCWs, these may not be photo radar, which is only permitted close to schools and intersections. To answer this concerned citizens' question, these radar signs were installed on Dolphin shortly thereafter. Therefore, in response to concerned citizens, as far as Dolphin is concerned, I can't answer for the other streets involved. I hope this assists in answering your questions of justification, even though this just applies to Dolphin. The residents initiated public outreach. Traffic counters were installed for one week on Dolphin. What is seen has taken nearly four years due to many emails, communications with elected officials, and city staff, which included national and international studies and surveys. And I do want to thank our council, mayor, and staff for all of their hard work. Thank you.
Sheri Dooley, getting back to where we should be.
Good evening, council and fellow residents. I want to take a moment to remind us all why we're here. City council meetings are meant to serve the people of Ocean Shores by focusing on the issues that directly affect us: public safety, water quality, infrastructure, tourism, budgeting, and responsible local governance. Lately, though, it feels like we've drifted off course. Public comment has become a stage for national political slogans and partisan speeches that have left, have little to do with the real challenges facing our city. I respect everyone's right to speak, but this space should remain focused on Ocean Shores, not national debates. We are not Congress. We're here to solve problems in our community. We've also heard claims that certain slogans aren't political, but let's be honest, phrases like "democracy depends on it" or "make America great again" clearly signal partisan affiliation. If we wouldn't tolerate one in this council meeting, we shouldn't promote the other. Fair is fair. Some confusion has also come up around voter registration. In Washington State, registration is nonpartisan. You don't declare a party and any voter registration, and any voter registration efforts, whether at an event or in an office, must remain strictly nonpartisan. Campaigning or political messaging at those booths isn't just inappropriate, it's illegal. If we're serious about keeping partisanship out of local government, we must apply that standard consistently, no matter what side of the aisle we're on. Ocean Shores deserves respectful, focused, and constructive dialogue about our town. We can disagree and we can debate, but let's do it on local terms, not with national slogans and political theater. I'd also like to offer a practical solution: move public comment to the end of the meeting. That way, we prevent unrelated political speeches from dominating our meetings. Finally, the council, you have the authority and responsibility to uphold the purpose of these meetings. That includes setting clear expectations for public comment. Leadership means protecting this space for what it was meant to be, a forum for serving Ocean Shores. So let's get back to just that, and I'd like to thank ChatGPT for helping me write this so I could keep it under three minutes.
That concludes public comment. All right, we'll go on to staff reports. City Administrator report, Scott Anderson.
All right, good evening, council and citizens. I don't have anything written tonight, because the last two days have been frantically busy, but I will tell you about what happened yesterday, because I think it is a step for something that's very, very important, that we're trying to, the mayor and I are trying to do, to kind of help move the city forward. And so yesterday, the mayor and I went to Seattle, we went up to the University of Washington, where we've been working with the Livable City Year program. And it's a program that incorporates architecture and design and built environment and spaces. And we're going to revisit the issue of sidewalks on Point Brown. And we'd like to make sure we don't make the, you know, the errors of the past. And so we were asking the UW and several of its departments through Livable City Year to collaborate with us on a number of things. One, they would CAD design various alternatives for sidewalks, and we're looking at three of those. It would also incorporate beautification measures that would make our median look nicer, that would make the potential sidewalks look nicer, what type of art we would like to include, what type of vegetation, what type of plants. It would also take a look at parking matters, and how do we address parking issues and challenges? And that could be, go from a range of things. And we've settled on none of them, we just want to see what the options. It could be making Point Brown a one-way street and have long-side street parking. It could be widening the median, it could be shortening the median, it could be rerouting non-pedestrian-oriented traffic or non-Point Brown traffic through Ocean Shores Boulevard in an order, in an attempt to make Point Brown more walkable and more pedestrian-friendly. It will address, you know, the number of adequate crosswalks that we have, and we'll have different teams that are working on that. So we're going to come to council with some of that. On the other hand, we're asking through UW-Livable City Year for the Evans School, which is the business school at the University of Washington, to look into how we might, A, pay for it, what grants are available, what comes through the Department of Commerce, where might we find money for that, and what relative costs are. What have the costs been for other cities that have done likely things or similar things in the past few years? Because as we know, what was proposed in 2017 is probably vastly more expensive today. And so we want to know, where would we get that money? And then what would those options cost? Because that's an important thing. We may find a super beautiful, extremely nice sidewalk design, but if it's too expensive and the citizens don't want it, then we'd look at something else. On the other hand, we may find something that's extremely pedestrian-friendly, and there's surface transportation money for pedestrian walkways that is available that wouldn't be otherwise. So we just want to have all the options. It'll probably take, I'll be honest, we're looking at the end of the school year to have like a final report. We do have a student right now who's working on just basic CAD design for some of our sidewalks, and that will bring to council in October, and have show you the layout and what we've seen and what we're looking at. But the real package will probably come somewhere in May or June of next year, and we'll just present the citizens and the council with all the options we've got. We'll take a look at them, and then we'll start the process of deciding how we want to move forward on this. But I think, you know, if there's any one thing we could do for the city of Ocean Shores to make it a, you know, a nicer place, a better place to live, that would really have a long-lasting impact, making our pedestrian corridor more walkable, beautifying it, I think would be that thing, and so that's what we're working on. I just want to let you know that. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Scott. Council liaison reports and committee reports. Start with Denise.
Well, I don't have much to report. The Public Works Committee meets next Monday on the 28th, and Finance Committee, instead of meeting this Thursday, will meet next Wednesday on the 30th.
Go ahead, Tom.
Due to my job, I missed my ones I was supposed to attend.
All right, Lisa Grebel.
Thank you, mayor. Just as Denise said, the Public Works Committee is next week.
All right, Lisa Scott.
I attended agenda setting.
Allison.
I signed warrants and attended the Public Safety Committee meeting.
Richard.
I signed warrants and I attended a radio board meeting yesterday. They discussed, there was a continued discussion about potential of moving the American, all of our radio stuff from the American Tower way up on the hill north of us into what I call the IGA Tower. It's actually the Vertical Bridge Tower. And, but if that happens, it will save a whole bunch of money, but it's fairly far down the future, sometime middle of next year at the earliest. Things about the existing contract have to be worked out, yada, yada. The Board also discussed the station financials, which, as all financials, meaningful but boring. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Rick.
A decision was made not to renew our financial contribution to the Council of Governments. The decision was spurred by the county deciding not to renew their dues of $61,000. And so our city also agreed not to make our semi-annual payment until some kind of real or even perceived value can be defined by the Council of Governments Executive Director.
All right, thanks. Denise, go ahead.
Thanks, Lisa, for reminding me. I also attended agenda setting.
All right. So mayor's report. I want to let everybody know that the clinic is underway right now. Construction is going. We had favorable report from the hospital as far as staffing goes, so that's also exciting. South Fire Station will start probably towards the end of this week. Contractor is getting ready to roll, he's got a little bit of paperwork to get straightened out, and then he'll start working on that. And anybody see the new flashing signs, crosswalk signs at the roundabout on that? Try to get those in. Hopefully, that'll stop people, they'll see those signs. I know I've sat there waiting for somebody to cross, and the car next to me just blew right by me. And that happens more than once to me when I was waiting for somebody to cross. So we wanted to get these crosswalk signs up there so they'll be flashing and be safer for everybody to get around town. And that's all I got. So get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Second.
Call-in favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We don't have any old business. First bit of new business is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, amending the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 15, Point 34, Point 080B, the sign code, regarding temporary signs providing servability and establishing an effective date. And that's going to be presented by Rich Hartman.
Thank you, mayor. As we know, this has been about a five-year journey. Got introduced to the Planning Commission five years ago, and it's been progressing at government speed. As council knows, the mayor and city administrator allowed me to work with the city attorney. So the city attorney was involved in the process to update the sign ordinance. And it's her language that you see exactly in 15.34.080B4C, which to us would be page 28 of your agenda. And the specific portion that I'm referring to, that she wrote, is: "Temporary signs placed in the right-of-way pursuant to this subsection shall not be located immediately in front of private property without the property owner's consent. For purposes of this subsection, immediately in front of private property shall mean that the sign's placement relative to the private property is such that a reasonable person may conclude that the owner of the property authorized placement of the temporary sign." I've also handed out to council the MSRC General Rule of Right of Ways for the state of Washington, which reads that the city right-of-way is an easement for public travel, and typically, a city does not own the fee title to the property underlying the public right-of-way. The abutting property owners have that fee title, and that usually extends to the center line of the right-of-way. Also, as this got published in our agenda, we also had the blessing from the Planning Commission chair as well. So that is my prologue. Open it up for public comment.
Yeah, do we have public comment out there? Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council again. Jane Schadick, Ocean Shores resident. I'm speaking today in opposition of the proposed amendment that would require property owner permission for placing temporary signs in the public right-of-way. The issue was reviewed by the Planning Commission in late 2024 and early 2025, and at the February 28th meeting, the chair reported that the city attorney's recommendation was to leave the code alone. I believe we should respect that legal guidance. Requiring property owner permission for placing temporary signs in the public right-of-way establishes a troubling precedent by effectively granting private individuals control over public space. Public right-of-ways are, by definition, community-owned areas intended for shared equitable use, including forms of constitutionally protected expressions such as temporary signage. Allowing adjacent property owners to restrict signage based on personal preference risks enabling selective censorship, inconsistent enforcement, and a breakdown in equitable access to public forums. The Reed versus Town versus, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court decision directly addresses this concern, making it clear that regulating signage based on content or subjective approval violates the First Amendment protections. Additionally, enforcement also presents a major challenge, with numerous vacant lots throughout the city contacting property owners would be difficult, if not impossible. Assessor data rarely includes phone numbers, and as demonstrated during the camping lot survey, many listed addresses are incorrect or outdated. If the city cannot reasonably enforce this proposed requirement, it risks adopting a code that is both ineffective and inconsistently applied. It is unrealistic to expect code enforcement to track down property permissions for each temporary sign, and equally impractical to place that burden on residents simply trying to post directional signs for garage sales, open houses, or local and church events. Ultimately, this proposal could lead to greater confusion, less fairness, and more strain on staff. I urge you to maintain the current sign code as previously recommended. There was also some discussion today about this, and somebody brought up enforcement, and there was a comment made that, oh, the property owner can't address this. And then more detail was put into it and said that, well, they'll just call code enforcement. Well, that's not uniformly enforcing a code. That's selectively enforcing a code. And if we can't uniformly do this code, then we need to find a way to do that. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else for comment? Yes. Jan, and Ricky.
Thank you, council. Jan Hyatt, resident. I agree entirely with the previous speaker on the comments. A major concern that I have is the enforcement. And who says it's temporary, and who says it's been there 189 days, or it's only been there 49 days? And how do we enforce this? It's just way complicated. And if anybody here took a couple of hours and read through the code and tried to interpret it, it's extremely difficult. Who are you going, where is an owner going to get the information regarding this new ordinance that says you can do X, Y, and Z, but you can't do this? And if I don't like it, I can pick it up and move it because it's on my property? We need to take a look at this again, and just let's stay with the old one until we really clean this up a little more. Thank you.
All right, Rick.
Rick Beveridge, resident and taxpayer. I'm concerned that if a taxpayer is allowed to remove a sign from property they do not own, that we, the taxpayers, will once again be saddled with responsibility to provide the money that a lawsuit would bring. If that happened to me, and I felt forced to sue over provision in a misguided city code, I would sue the deep pockets, which would be the city. I'd also try and sue the city council members that voted to pass this ordinance. If common sense does not prevail here, I request that the city takes a on-the-record vote by name of each council member, so there is a record as to who did or did not vote to vote this code change. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments out there? Yes, go ahead.
I agree with all the speakers that have just stepped forward. One of the first things I thought of was, why are we only asking the person whose property is right in front? Why aren't we asking the person across the street? When we do variances and conditional use permit, it goes out 300 feet. So if you're going to start doing this, maybe you should include everybody that's all the way around. And that sounds pretty ridiculous, doesn't it? So again, I agree with what everybody else has said tonight. Thank you.
Any other public comment out there? See none. We got Don Williams.
Yeah, we okay?
Yep, we can hear you, Don.
Thank you very much, and good evening to all. My first comment is that nowhere in this, this change, this ordinance change, does it clearly resolve the question regarding what the sign height means, the word height? I didn't see it there, even though it's been a question for a long time. Is it the vertical distance, or the vertical dimension of the sign, or is it the distance is measured from the ground to the top of the sign? And I don't see that clarified here. I'd recommend that you add a definition of the word height, or sign height, to the section, I think a section A, or section one of the Chapter 1534 definitions. And my next comment is pretty much what everybody else has said regarding the signs on city right-of-way. Even though apparently there is a clear definition of city right-of-way versus city-owned property, I guess I don't, I've never really seen it. There's no line drawn in front of my property that shows what city right-of-way is and versus city-owned property. So if they're going to, if there's going to be a distinction there, then that should also be put in somehow and explained. And I tend to agree with the previous speakers about the question of the owners of the property. And I guess in general, if it's the purpose of this ordinance to practically drop, eliminate the number of political signs being published, that's going to, that's the outcome. I think, except for your own property, I don't think you're going to see very many political signs. So if that's the, if that's the purpose of this amendment, which I think it shouldn't be, then, then I think it's, you can leave it in. Otherwise, you have to strike that section out and go along with what's been said in the past. So I support the other public comments, I think all four or five of them, and I thank you for your time. Bye. Thank you.
All right, so that ends public comment. Council, questions or discussions? Yes, Lisa.
So I want to just thank you for all the work that went into this. I know what a challenge this is, having, dealing with this on a daily basis. But we lost one thing in all the comments. This was written by our city attorney. The city attorney that was online when that original comment was made isn't her area of expertise. Lisa Marshall, who is a city attorney for the same firm, specializes in this and wrote this change. So it has gone through our city attorney. But I will say one thing, and Rich is right, and I don't, I know that the council, we have the MRSC guidelines, what talks about a public right-of-way. And most people don't realize that you, as the underlying property owner, technically own out to the middle of the road. The city maintains an easement for transportation utility purposes, not in every case, but in, I'd say, 95% of the cases. And so what started this is people putting garage sale signs up, campaign signs, a bunch of signs, and just willy-nilly in front of people's property. If I own that property and I haven't given you permission to put a sign up, I don't want it in my right-of-way in front of my property, because it's showing you think I'm maybe supporting a person, or supporting this garage sale, or supporting this estate sale, or whatever it may be. I think we, as property owners, have a right. And when it comes to, you know, enforcement, it's use your judgment. If you haven't gotten permission from a property owner, don't put the sign there. It's simple as that. You have meet and greets, you do lots of campaigning when you run, and that's where you hand your signs out if people support you, and they can put them in their own yard. But we have had problems over the last, at least, two campaign cycles that I'm aware of, of where people will purposely put their campaign signs in front of other people's property. And I think if you're not supporting it, you should have the right to remove them. And it's not just campaign, it's other signs. I understand the heartburn, I understand what people are going through, but again, let the citizens, you know, let us decide what we want in front of our property in terms of temporary signs. It shouldn't be up to any individual to do that. And it doesn't need to be in code enforcement issue. If you're getting a complaint from a constituent- If you're getting a complaint from a constituent of someone, a constituent, if the, uh, code enforcement's getting a complaint because someone put up a sign erroneously, then that can come in as a complaint and it can be dealt with. But absolutely, I don't think this is going to be a code enforcement nightmare unless you make it one. And it shouldn't be.
Any other, yes, Denise.
Um, I I just wanted to add that I initially did have a problem with, uh, that that particular section. Uh, I also talked to several people and they totally agree with what Lisa Scott just said, that they do not want signs, uh, appearing near their property that makes it appear as if they support that that cause, that garage sale, whatever it is. Um, and Ri- Rich, we had talked about this and that one of the things that this, um, ordinance does is it does give the property owner, um, the right to remove that sign uh, without any, uh, pushback. And, uh, I I would actually like to see that, uh, clarified and added to the the ordinance, that the property owner does have that right.
All right, Richard.
So a couple of things I want to say. And first, I agree with Don Williams. I found the height of the sign a little bit confusing, and I wonder if that maybe needs clarification. Uh, and I'm not sure, does that mean height above grade? Or does that mean the sign itself can only be five feet high? Uh, so I'd just like to see that clarified a little bit. I disagree with every person who spoke with public comments. I absolutely agree with what Lisa Scott and Denise Sire said. I have several times looked at the state or the county GIS map. And although I can't remember, I don't have the map memorized, many properties, as the information says, the property owns right out to the middle of the street. So when you put your sign up in my property, you're violating my rights. And if you put, I love the Glueplex plan on my property, I'm gonna have a problem. And what the comments that have been made were implying that you can put any cotton-picking sign that you want to put in my front yard. The perception in this city and every other city is that the property owner owns that property all the way out to the street. And the perception is, when I drive down the street and I see garage sale signs or political signs or for-sale signs, uh, my perception is, is the person who owns that property is supporting the use of that sign. And if somebody posts a political sign or any other sign that I vigorously disagree with on my property, I have a problem. And there's a misperception, as Lisa so eloquently pointed out, of what is actually meant by the public right-of-way. Public right-of-way is an easement for the roads and utilities. It's not the public's right to to access and do whatever they want to do on that property except for use that public sidewalk or, in Ocean Shores' case, walk along that parking strip. That's all we have. Uh, so I absolutely am in favor of this ordinance as it is written with the clarification that Denise talked about and the potential clarification about the five-foot, uh, um, how high the sign should be. Uh, so I'm very much in favor of this ordinance, mostly as it is written with minor clarifications.
Any other comments or discussion? Yes, Tom?
I read the whole thing. I sat down before I came and read it. It's, it's written good. It's, it's, it's got all the detail on it. There's always gonna be problems with everything we do. No matter how good we go through it, how many times we go through it, somebody's gonna find something wrong. When we ran the last time, we put our signs anyplace almost, I have to admit. And they got taken down, they got tore up, all that type of stuff. So I think the ordinance is good. We're not gonna be able to anticipate everything people want out of it. But we can also tweak it and make it better if we need to.
All right, Allison and then Rich.
Um, for me, if if this was written by the attorney, then I know everything in it is being done legally. The only thing I may think about adding is like the the definition on the height, exactly what that is, and the question that Denise had. But other than that, with the attorney writing this, I I have no problem going on the record as voting yes for it.
Go ahead, Rich.
So two things, uh, the height was taken out because on purpose. If the height was taken out on purpose because of past issues where in opinions of the roundtable as this was being put together, what difference does it make that a sign was put seven feet off the ground on a monument sign? What what really does this is the difference? What matters if the sign, a temporary sign, is put in the second-story window of a person's, uh, of a business or home? Honestly, why does that matter? So there's seven opinions, there's two hundred opinions. That's why it was taken out, because in the scheme of things, the height shouldn't be a reason that someone makes a phone call and a complaint is registered and a code enforcement officer goes out. It's, anyway. Number two, the way we have things now, I can literally go to Tom's home and I'm not sure what his political affiliation is, but I'll say for, I'll say that I'm the opposite political affiliation for tonight's discussion. And I can put signs in the hypothetical right-of-way in front of his property. And if he touches it, if it's a political sign, as a code enforcement officer, you know that there is now an issue. You aren't just going to go out there and change it. So for the people in the room that don't like this update, people can go in front of your home and put signs up, and you can't touch them without consequences. That is not palatable to me. It's not reasonable, and this gives other cities do this. Uh, Ms. Marshall wrote that, that I told you about, that, uh, section, and it seems to work well. And worst-case scenario is, uh, someone makes a phone call to the person that put the sign up and they come get it after it's probably been rested on the ground. So that's kind of the rest of the story. But it's trying to clean up, and it's, again, for all signs, let's not pick on political. It's for all signs, and we have them all around our city, advertising for everything from cosmetics to internet to whatever you can think of, jobs. So that's, that's.
All right, anybody else? Yes, Lisa.
I would like to, um, bring this back for a second reading, if so, just to clarify some of the the items that came up. Typically, we'd like to do second readings, but I know we do prove on the first.
All right, yes, Richard.
So I have a couple of more comments. Uh, and the first one is there were numerous public comments about enforcement. Well, as I drive around the city, there must be several hundred speed limit signs and radar enforced signs. And how are they enforced? Uh, and this this ordinance, uh, falls much in that same category. The other comment I'd like to make is when this city was platted back in, I don't know, the nineteen-sixties, there were something like twenty thousand lots platted. Uh, and all of those lots have been sold, uh, are are owned by somebody. And there is at least seven thousand, almost eight thousand residents. And so if you want to put your sign down, there's at least eight thousand people that you can ask permission from. And if you can't find the owner of the lot where you want to stick your sign, then there's many thousands of other options available. So I just don't see that as an issue. Uh, and one of the reasons I love the democratic process is, as Mr. Hartman pointed out, about the the five-foot that I brought attention to, what he just said makes absolute sense. There's no reason I can't put my sign, whatever it is, in my second-story window, except I don't have a second story. Uh, but you get the point. Uh, uh, there was a big contention in the last election about a political sign that was at the top of a tall billboard. And and in the big scheme of things, it didn't make any difference. It 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 was, it was outside of of causing a chaotic discussion. It had no impact on the election. Uh, so I withdraw what I said about the height. I agree with what Mr. Hartman said. Uh, I do also like and want to clarify, and Denise, correct me if I didn't get it right, uh, what you were saying is that you would like a clause added to this ordinance that says either property owner can remove and destroy a sign that is illegally placed on my property. And I would like that added. And if that was added, I'm all in favor of passing this ordinance tonight, but I'm also okay if we take it to a second reading. Uh, it, you know, and that's the council decision.
Yeah, I think it's just remove it, not destroy. And I know everybody gets tired, and I've been trying to be really good about not bringing another city into this. But, um, I know one of the things at every election time, I always remind, um, everybody running for any political office or, um, just that it's that time of year again, be respectful. If you want to put a sign in front of somebody's property, just get their permission. Um, if we run across anything, we remove the sign. We bring him as citi- as city employees, we bring him to City Hall, we call the party, say, hey, we removed your sign, it was in the wrong spot, you can come get him if you want. And I would also encourage not necessarily destroy, but if you have a sign, call the candidate. Their numbers, their emails, whatever are all in the voter res- information online. Just have them come get the sign.
Yes, Richard.
My response to that is if I remove this sign, you've implied that I have to store the sign. And I'm quite willing to store the sign in my circular file.
All right, we got any other, uh, comments? All right, so we'll move on to the next item, bring this one back. Um, so. All right, so number nine here, resolution of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing the sale, use, and transfer of credits generated through the Weatherwax Wetlands Mitigation Bank. And that is going to be presented by our city planner, Marshall Reed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Ocean Shores. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come present this ordinance. Um, so the, uh, the Weatherwax, um, Wetland Habitat Mitigation Bank um, has been selling credits, um, at a, at a bargain basement price. And, um, and so for the buffer credits, uh, for impacting buffer of a wetland, uh, previously, that was set at seventy thousand dollars. And this was, uh, previous council and mayor set this. And we're finding that, um, there are going to be opportunities coming up within the city where, um, where mitigation options are going to present themselves. And the funding that comes in from this bank, um, was intended to, uh, pay for the bank only. And, uh, we've, we've all but done that and put the money in escrow that was required to be, uh, funded for the long-term, uh, maintenance of the bank once the city has done selling credits out of it. Um, but the the proposal in this resolution is to raise the, um, the two, um, the two different credit values up from, uh, in the buffer instance for residential from seventy thousand to one hundred thousand dollars per credit. Uh, seventy thousand is about a dollar seventy-one per square foot or something like that. And we're gonna be up, um, at about two dollars and thirty-one cents a square foot there. Um, for commercial, we're gonna leave that at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, that's what it was in the original resolution, and the proposal is to leave that. Um, for, uh, commercial, let's see, for the, uh, residential direct wetland impacts, um, originally was at a hundred thousand dollars, and we want to raise that to one fifty. And the additional funds will be used to purchase other mitigation options as they present them, uh, present themselves within the community. Um, one thing that, um, that has become painfully clear is that, um, the bank is not gonna have enough credits to, uh, probably fully develop all of the wetland lots that we have in Ocean Shores today. So, um, it would be, you know, my suggestion to the council that anytime a mitigation opportunity presents itself, um, that you make every effort to capitalize on that so that, you know, we can develop as many of these, um, these properties as possible. There's a long-term payback on that. When you take a forty thousand dollar lot or a thirty thousand dollar lot and you turn it into something that's worth three hundred thousand, the long-term benefit is, uh, coming back to you in the form of taxes. So, um, this is an effort to build up a little bit of finances uh, in order to take advantage of some of these other, uh, mitigation opportunities that come up. So that's what I have for that. Um, this is, uh, by title, resolution of the City of Ocean Shores of this, Ri- excuse me, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing sale, use, and transfer of credits generated through the Weatherwax Mitigation Bank, um, raising full, uh, bank credits or for wetland direct impacts from one hundred thousand dollars to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per credit for residential and the, uh, buffer-only credits from seventy thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. We got any public comment? Yes.
Actually, not so much a comment. I just had a question if, uh, if Marshall's willing to answer when we're done here. And and I was just wondering how many credits are left in the bank and what we're doing actively to replenish that bank.
All right, Kurt.
Hi, Kurt Dooley. Um, I I appreciate Marshall's explanation at the beginning of this, that helped. And and as my wife did, I also want to thank ChatGPT because I asked it to explain this all to me like I was five years old. And it was a huge help to understand it. But I'd like to offer a few observations on the two resolutions before you tonight related to the Weatherwax Wetlands Mitigation Bank, one authorizing the sale of credits and the other concerning the recovery of credits originally tied to the airport, uh, obstruction removal project. These resolutions show that the mitigation bank is becoming both an important environmental asset and a potential source of significant revenue for the city. With credits valued between a hundred thousand and three hundred thousand dollars each, the long-term financial potential is substantial, and the environmental value is just as important. My main point tonight is this, it would be helpful if the resolution included more detail about the status of the credit inventory, specifically how many total credits did the city start with? How many have been released so far under the mitigation banking instrument? How many have been sold or used, and how many remain available? Because credits are released gradually as environmental milestones are met, understanding where we are in the process is key to understanding how the bank is functioning today and what our capacity is moving forward. I also have two questions for future consideration. Will there be any public reporting or tracking on credit sales and how the resulting funds are used? And two, is there a long-term plan or policy guiding how these credits will be managed and how the revenue will be reinvested? Finally, I'd suggest that a public education effort, such as a community town hall or forum or something, led by the city planner, could go a long way toward helping residents understand what mitigation banking is, how it works, and why it matters for Ocean Shores. With a resource this valuable, both environmentally and financially, I think transparency and public engagement are worth the effort. Thank you.
We have any other, uh, public comment? We got one online, uh, Don Williams, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this resolution, uh, as you, everybody has said, is regarding publicly setting some prices for the, for the credits of the Weatherwax. And to me, it's really great to have the council set the price for the credits. But, uh, I wonder why at this late date the council's getting involved. As in the past, the council has never, never been part of setting the price of Weatherwax credits. As a matter of fact, uh, um, I don't recall, uh, any action by the council to set the price. The ma- the mayor, years ago, when all this was going on, was was given the authority to set the price based upon her personal negotiations with the applicant. After the, uh, Department of Ecology assigns how many credits this particular, uh, wetland is worth, uh, they would come to the city and negotiate with the mayor totally in private. It was never disclosed how the prices were set. Uh, so it's great to have, uh, the first time. So it's great to have the first time prices are set. But I think if you ask the city planner, who I've heard say before, all the credits have been sold. The credits that currently exist, that there are ways to get new credits, especially with the idea there coming up in Agenda Item Number Eleven where we are going to buy back from the Federal Aviation Administration, a number of credits at a cost of ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. That's what the Agenda Number Eleven is all about. But these credits are going to have to be hoarded because we're going to need a lot of credits to build the fire break, the way that the mayor and the city council really thinks it has to be built, a long distance. Those are going to require Weatherwax credits. And I think right now we have none and we'll have some after we pay the FAA the ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. But yeah, please ask the city planner to explain the status of the credits. And if there has been a city council involvement on the price, I've never seen it. I don't believe there is one. It was always done by the mayor at her own discretion. So thank you very much.
All right, council, questions or comments? Yes, Lisa?
Marshall, can you please clarify some of the questions that came up?
Yeah, sure. So this resolution that we brought forward tonight is replacing the resolution that's taped to my wall. And by limited knowledge of how government works, I'm sure that resolutions have to be passed by the council. The mayor may have made a recommendation, but it was passed as a resolution. We have that number and it's within the city's document files. So that's what we're going to talk about there on how they got set initially. The follow-up report that I have coming later in the council meeting is probably a better place to talk about the current state of the bank, the credits we've sold, the credits that we expect to be released from the bank. We had our staff out in the Weatherwax today, working on the reports that are required to release the final credits. I'll give you those numbers in the next presentation that I give. And then we'll kind of, we'll try to make clarification for some of the questions that have come up tonight. It's better suited for that discussion.
All right, thank you. Yes, Lisa?
To add one thing, Mr. Dooley had come up and had a question. With resolutions, the reason you try not to have how many credits you have, how many are left, how many you've gone through is because resolutions, you shouldn't be coming back all the time to change them unless necessary. You try to keep that kind of information out so that if you're adding credits or if you are, for whatever reason, when that changes, you're not having to come back to change the resolution.
All right, anybody else have a comment? Yes, Rich?
Marshall, how are you deciding or how are you coming up with a number to refer to us to decide what the value is?
So that, we had a discussion with the next closest bank in our area and that's the Long Beach Wetland Mitigation Bank down on the Long Beach Peninsula. And our credits were set at about fifty thousand dollars lower than a for-profit bank. And so we just wanted to get up to their level so that we're competitive. If you guys remember back about halfway through my first year of selling credits and developing wetland properties, we saw that we were racing through the bank at a fairly high rate of speed. And so our service area goes from Grayland all the way up to the mouth of the Capelus River. And I came to the council and I asked you guys to allow me to limit sales to the bank, to the residents of Ocean Shores only. You guys paid for the bank, you should receive the benefits. And right now, the difficulty in obtaining credits is such that that was a very wise decision to hold those credits for the city's benefit. The intended purpose of the bank, knowing that we have a lot of wetland lots in Ocean Shores that are requiring mitigation, the bank was intended to be the easy button for mitigation, to have a compensatory option because our lots are so small and the options for onsite mitigation are so limited that the set aside of the Weatherwax property and the formation of the bank there provided a fairly easy opportunity for these wetland lots owners to get in and be able to turn their lot that would be difficult to develop, to say the least, into something that's somewhat easily developable by compensatory mitigation on that, so.
All right, thanks. You got a follow-up? Yeah, go ahead.
So at this point, you're recommending that we come up to the exact level of another bank. Do you, if this other bank is a for-profit, do you feel that we should maybe come up to that level and add some kind of a CPI to it so that we're keeping in step with probably what the for-profit bank is doing, which is raising prices every so often?
Yeah, we hadn't given that much consideration and we didn't match their prices. We're within ten thousand dollars. I think we're ten thousand dollars higher on the buffer. And I think they were at one forty, is not what they were. So we're actually lower than them on the buffer and we're pretty close to matching them on the direct wetland impacts. And we didn't check the commercial rates because to date, I don't know that we've developed any commercial properties. We will in the future, but we're already set at one and a half times. You know, the residential rate is one fifty, the commercial rate is three hundred. So we're already double for commercial properties. And on the residential side, we're trying to keep those square footage costs to something that's reasonable for a residential type development. We don't want to add a, you know, six or a seven dollar a square foot price tag to an already expensive lot. So we're, we just feel like we're in that ballpark where we're not going to stop stop development of wetland properties by overpricing the credits. We don't want to hamper that. I mean, that was the easy button for those folks that are dealing with that encumbrance. We don't want to, you know, totally hamstring them. But the additional funds coming in through this proposal would be for us to continue to buy or get, take advantage of opportunities for mitigation that come up within Ocean Shores. There's not a lot of that coming down the pipe. So anything that does come down the pipe, you know, should be considered. And this will give you some sort of a financial way to get into that.
All right, thanks. Sarah, you wanted to add something?
Yep, just so that there's clear clarification. The council adopted on October twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, Resolution Seven Fifty-four, which authorizes, the council authorizes the mayor or and/or designee to sell these credits. At no point has it ever just been up to the mayor. The council has authorized the mayor to sell the credits or their designee such as the planning department. So I just wanted to take that out because sometimes things get said and then it kind of delays where we go.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Richard?
Unlike the last agenda item, I don't see anything that is confounding or confusing about this resolution. So I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing the sale, use and transfer of credits generated through the Weatherwax Wetlands Mitigation Bank.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Next up, we got a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, approving the hire of a part-time janitorial employee. And that is presented by Finance Director Sarah Logan.
Sorry I did that to you, Marshall. You could have just gone back to back. Sorry. So as many of you know, because the city administrator and mayor had talked about it over the last few months, we ended up obtaining the Chance Approach bathrooms that had been taken care of by Washington State Parks. And that was under a twenty-five-year agreement. We realized very quickly that those bathrooms take a lot more than the city's seven to three or nine to five or eight to four employees could do. So we enlisted the help of a citizen who has been wonderful. There are ten restrooms down there. And the reason we bring this forward as a part-time employee opposed to an RFP for a professional services agreement is because we don't feel that it's necessary to do that RFP. We did reach out to MG Cleaning, which is our current service, and they had declined taking on those on top of all their other duties. Also, we have the part of the Public Works Department. Sometimes those things come under a Maintenance One or a Maintenance Two's job descriptions. We did reach out to the Public Works Teamsters Union to discuss whether they'd like to take this on or if we should go a different direction. And they also agreed that we should go a different direction. So what we're requesting tonight is for the remainder of this year, the cost would be about eight thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. And then, of course, fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy for twenty twenty-six. It would require a budget amendment. The individual that's currently doing it has done an outstanding job. And as you, I'm sure, can see by just social media alone, the, oh my gosh, have you seen the bathrooms? Isn't quite as alarming. This individual also goes and opens up at a quarter to six every single day. And then our local police department closes those bathrooms at ten o'clock. I know that they'll have a schedule and then, of course, less bathrooms as we get into the winter months. But at this time, one individual has been maintaining and doing an outstanding job of ten restrooms that we were not necessarily prepared to take on. So that is the request.
All right, thanks. Do we have any public comment? All right, online, Don Williams?
Yeah, how we doing?
Doing good. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I certainly agree with this requirement. It has to be, should be approved. And my only question is on the funding application. The bars code that the amendment is being asked to propose, to amend, the bars code, it's for the Parks Department, it's under the general fund. It's the Parks Department of the general fund and the line item is called professional services. And that's certainly where it should be done. The issue is, however, that particular line item already has a budget for the biennium. I checked it today, forty-five thousand dollars for the, is already budgeted for the biennium. And so far, a quarter of the way through the biennium, on the end of June, we've only spent six thousand dollars of that forty-five thousand. So I really question why a budget requirement, a budget amendment is needed at least this calendar year, which would have been the, that's the eighty-one, ninety. And I think maybe you ought to wait to amend the budget to see at the end of the year. This will fit right in with the existing forty-five thousand dollar budget that's there already. And maybe perhaps consider budgeting it for next year when the situation of that particular fund, which is in the Parks Department budget, is examined at the end of the year, when the year is closed off and shifted into the next calendar year. So my recommendation is approve this, but I don't think you'd need a budget amendment for this year. Thank you.
Right, that ends public comment. Council, anybody have anything they want to say? Yes, Rich?
When it comes to the bars code that he was referring to, don't we have some expenses coming up that we haven't, you know, we haven't expensed yet? We're a little slow doing some of the projects.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think that I interpreted the council's wants and the citizens' wants when we did our presented budget where we went to baseline budgeting. So that means we went through every single fund and we took it back to baseline. If it hadn't been used, it got lowered. If it had been used, what was the purpose and did it need to be upped by any amount? The current balance in the Parks budget, I would not touch. I would rather move money over and then reevaluate as we did for this budget. Do we need a higher baseline or should we stay the same? We're trying to treat all of these things and maybe it's a little different than the last twenty-five years. But we're trying to treat these things in a way that you can see everything that comes out. We're not budgeting money arbitrarily to sit there. And that's what I've noticed in the past is that we have money sitting places and then it's not used in other places. So I would rather move money over, mark it and code it to what it's for. And then we know going forward, we need X amount of dollars just for that one professional service going forward in our next budget.
All right, anybody else? Richard?
So I appreciate what Mr. Williams had to say. I had similar questions. He dove a lot deeper than I did. But Sarah, I really appreciate what you've just explained. And you're the, you are where the rubber meets the road. I go with what your assessment is and I agree with what you want to do right now.
All right, Denise?
I agree with moving the money over so that way we have the allocation for each item that we want to spend. But I do have a question. If this is for one employee, what happens when he gets sick or goes on vacation?
I do believe that this individual does have a backup. We would just have to navigate at that time. Of course, in the winter months, it's not going to be as trying as the summer months. And we would still use those funds to help pay for that person. But maybe that person wouldn't have to be our on-the-books employee at that time.
Anybody else? Yes, Allison?
So is this person right now working through Express? And we'll be able to take them from working through Express to where they are a city employee now?
They are not working through Express. They're working under a W nine, so they would get a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year. However, there are some restrictions when it comes to janitorial service specifically. And so we did that for the short interim, but this was the most compliant way to go. We didn't go through Express initially because we believed, you know, it was a lower amount and we could just do the ten ninety-nine at the end of the year. But unfortunately, they throw, you know, random things like janitorial service into an RCW, so.
Well, I think this is a great idea and a huge thank you to the individual who's doing that.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, Lisa?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the hire of a part-time janitorial employee.
Second?
All right, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And thank you to Rick Bevinridge because that's who's been doing it this entire time.
That's a busy job when you go through forty rolls of toilet paper in one day.
Disgusting job.
Yeah. All right, we have a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing the recovery purchase of wetland mitigation credits originally sold for the airport obstruction removal project. And that's presented by our lead planner, Marshall Reed.
Thanks again, Mayor and Council and citizens. Through an absolute stroke of luck and our public records clerk, Sandy Madison, I was digging through some records, looking for some things that pertain to the airport earlier this year. And she brought a document in that was an old, it was labeled Army Corps of Engineers. And in looking through that document to kind of see what, you know, how the airport was put together, because I remember when I was a kid, it was over on the golf course behind Bennett's. And then they moved it over to the Bayside. So I was just kind of curious what was going on there. As I was looking through that document, I found that when the airport was moved, the mitigation for all of the wetland impacts and the future obstruction removal had been taken care of through a transfer of somewhere around a hundred and nineteen acres from a combination of, it seems to me like ITT Rainier was in there and the city had some property or whatnot. But they transferred all that to the Washington State Game Department, which currently runs the, there's a waterfowl hunting area out there and whatnot for the game department. So that took care of the mitigation requirements for the construction of the airport and for future obstruction removal. Fast forward to about three years ago, we had a project out there that involved removing trees and shrubs in some of the areas in the approach and the takeoff zones of the airport. And not knowing that this mitigation had already been taken care of, we transferred credits for this project from the Weatherwax Mitigation Bank to the Federal Aviation Administration through a grant process. They paid the bank and we transferred, let's see, I got a number here for you. We transferred point one eight credits worth of buffer impact and we, excuse me, that was- We transferred .18 credits worth of buffer impact, and we, excuse me, that was direct wetland impacts, and we transferred .175 credits for the buffer. And so I contacted the interagency review team that manages the bank with the city, and asked them what was the process to recover that credit from the FAA and transfer that back into the bank, so we could get that off to another project that needs credits. And the response was, well, you just need to repay, transfer that, and do the reverse of a notice of transfer, and show that we're transferring that credit back into the bank, notify the interagency review team, there's a member of, so I serve as the city's member to the IRT, we have a member from the Army Corps of Engineers, and we have a member from the Washington State Department of Ecology. So if approved, we would write a check to the FAA, and they would allow us to transfer that credit back into the bank, and then we can build some other things in a wetland. So that's the crux to this, the subject, a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing the recovery purchase of wetland mitigation credits originally sold for the airport obstruction removal project. And the expense on this is $93,600, and at the rate that credits are going to be moving, that money will come out, and then it will be turned right back around and shoved in the bank again. So it'll be a short-term loan if we move credits the way we have in the last two years.
All right, thanks, Marshall. Any public comment? Yes, go ahead.
That's Kurt Dooley again. I have no objection to the resolutions themselves, I would just reiterate what I said before about adding additional information into the resolutions. How many credits do we have? How many are we spending? What are we spending it on? There's no law in the Washington State that forbids that, and if the goal in not putting that in is to reduce the number of resolutions, I don't think that's valid. I think transparency is far more important for the taxpayers to know what, because we're talking serious money here, so transparency, I think, is more important than easing the workload on a city government worker. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And we don't have any online, so, Counsel, anybody's questions, comments? Go ahead, Richard.
So there are some questions asked in the other wetlands. How many credits are left in the bank? How many do we actually start with? Do you have those numbers?
I do have those numbers, and we have on the agenda tonight, as a discussion item, number 12, the fire break, excuse me, the fire break, wetland mitigation, and I'm going to give you all of the numbers, and including the ones that Mr. Dooley is asking about. I will give you the balances, what we have, what we're purchasing back from the airport, and then you guys will hear all of those things.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yes, Lisa?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, authorizing the recovery purchase of wetland mitigation credits originally sold for the airport obstruction removal project.
Second.
All right, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Well, don't go anywhere.
I won't.
You're up next, Marshall.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we have a discussion item for the fire break wetland mitigation, and that's led by our city planner, Marshall Reed.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So there's been discussion about the need for a fire break that runs from the south end of the Phase One and Phase Two fire break, along the western edge of the City of Ocean Shores. This fire break is going to have a significant mitigation need. The project proposal is to construct an approximately 18,000-foot fire break, 50 to 50 or 20, 25 to 50 foot in width, and that will be the project. It will start from the end of Phase Two, the west end of Ocean Shores Boulevard, and it'll terminate near the west end of Marine View Drive Southwest. The proposal would be to use the same method of vegetation conversion as used in Phase One and Phase Two, meaning we're not going to go grade the ground or tear up the root mass, we're simply going to mow it and convert that vegetation from a woody debris and shrub scrub to a herbaceous-type environment that could be mowed with a conventional or a brush mower. There's going to be several processes required to complete the project. Mitigation for unavoidable impacts to the mosaic of interdental wetlands is probably the most significant part of the project, or their buffers along the alignment of the fire break. This discussion is to inform the council of three possible options. I've got a fourth one listed here that's going to supplement the first three, and we would include that fourth option. It's almost a freebie that we're going to capitalize on that as much as we can to mitigate for these impacts. Sarah, do we have Forterra online tonight? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and, you know, go through their part of the presentation. The process outline, the first thing that we're going to need to do is perform a tabletop delineation using best technologies to determine a preliminary alignment of the fire break. One of the things that we've been given as guidance by the Department of Ecology is to be flexible in the alignment of the fire break, to try to go around the most critical of habitat along that area. So it won't be just a straight line. Luck would have it that when we went down Motel Row, we were able to go straight down the property line and not impact or get into any, you know, serious wetlands. There were wetlands that were impacted, but it wasn't like there were ponds that we were wading through. And then, once we've got that preliminary alignment, we'll have to go in and do a full wetland delineation. That means we're going to have biologists in there, looking at soil conditions, plant species, and making a, would be a Department of Ecology-level assessment of where the boundaries of those wetlands are, determining what the classification of wetland is, and how wide those buffers are. We'll use that information to adjust the alignment and try to minimize or avoid any of those critical areas that we can along the alignment. And then, once we're done with that delineation, and we've realigned to avoid and minimize those are tenants of the wetland process, then a final alignment can be derived. The estimates that I have are based on mitigation from Phase One and Phase Two, that's the fire break that was done 50 feet wide, there was 5,900 lineal feet in front of the motels. The adjusted credits required for that project was 1.092. And so, without looking too much into what are potential differences in the wetlands in front of Motel Row and the wetlands in front of the residential properties between Motel Row and Marine View Drive, I'm using the same numbers to come up with an estimate, and then we'll flesh those out through a full delineation. The estimated credits required for Phase Three with 17,000 lineal feet of impact area is 2.9 credits. That's a significant amount of wetland impact. The options to provide for mitigation in this, the, one of the first options that we tried to capitalize on was that Long Beach Mitigation Bank, managed by Ecological Land Services out of, I think they're in Everett. And we still have that request in with ELS, but that request is pending authorization from their IRT. Their people from the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Ecology have to approve, because we're not in their service area, just like they're not in our service area. So in order for them to transfer credits from their service area outside of it, that requires approval from their IRT. I reached out to the Department of Ecology for their input on how likely it was that the IRT would authorize that credit transfer outside of their basin, and it sounds like it's not a very good option. It's likely going to be denied, because we still have credits in our bank, and we have some other mitigation opportunities within the community. And so, the way that Ecology and the Army Corps of Engineers like to allocate credits is by basin. Obviously, if I could go grab some credits from another basin and preserve ours for community private property development, that would be my choice. If we get that option, we would be coming back to council and exercise that option. Go ahead, Scott.
Can I just jump in? The one thing that we didn't put on this one is the cost on that. If we purchased those three credits, I believe is that at $140,000 a credit, if we were to do this, if it was allowed, that'd be $420,000, is that correct?
Yeah, that's in round numbers, that's.
So that option one, just because I don't see there, we're looking at $420,000 cost to the city to purchase three credits from this bank, if that is allowed.
Right, and that would cover, that would cover, you know, our estimate, and understand that that estimate could go up or down, depending on well we can avoid impacting any of those critical areas. Hopefully, it will go down, we'll do the best we can. The advantage to that option is it wouldn't require the city to deplete our mitigation bank credits. The disadvantage to this option is it's unlikely to be approved by the IRT of the Long Beach Mitigation Bank. So that moves us into, option number two, would be to utilize credits available in the Weatherwax Mitigation Bank, and here's we get into the totals, what our current balance is, what we're purchasing back, and what the total bank was. So currently, today's ledger shows .905 credits in the bank. Purchasing the credits transferred to the airport obstruction removal back would add another .985 credits to that, for a total of 1.89 credits. Feel free to check my math, I've been looking at a lot of numbers this week, so I think they're on, but feel free to check. Once the city has met the performance standards required, the IRT, so the remaining credits that we have in the bank, and then we're done, there's 4.074 credits remaining in the bank. And the bank originally had 11 and change, we've burned through all but 5.9635 of those That's the final number, the 5.9635 is the final number that the bank will have available to transfer to projects to offset unavoidable impacts, once the airport credits have been returned and the final release by the IRT has been authorized. Currently, that 4.074, we have to perform some work within the Weatherwax properties in order for the IRT to release those credits for us to transfer them to projects. So we've been working on that for a significant amount of time, and I had my planners out in the Weatherwax today, doing some more work to try to get those credits released. The total cost for this, at the current prices, not including what we raised it to tonight, based on Phase One and Phase Two, would be $265,700. The advantage of this proposal, the credits once released would be immediately available to reserve and transfer to the project. The disadvantage, the credits would no longer be available for private property development. This would force local property owners to seek mitigation options elsewhere, adding a significant burden to the development of privately-owned parcels in Ocean Shores. This would also mean that the city would be unable to realize funds from the sale of these credits to private property developers. The parcels would likely remain undeveloped, negatively impacting their assessed value and tax revenue potential to the city, and it effectively slows the long-term payback for the city establishing the bank. Providing a low-cost mitigation option to wetland parcels turns a $40,000 parcel into a $300,000 parcel. So that's the thing that I just want everybody to be aware of. If we use our bank for that, then we hamstring some of the private property development within the city. Option three.
Wait, Marshall, if you don't mind just jumping in, because I think you explained it, one thing that I don't think the average person would have caught it if they weren't familiar with the instrument. Just to be clear, we weren't given all of the credits initially, we have to earn those credits. So when Mr. Williams said, oh, we were out of credits, at one time, we were close to being, very close to being out of credits. We still have the opportunity to earn more, but the number you gave was the final number.
Yeah, so let's say it this way, we had one number of credits, there was 11, I think it was 11.6 credits.
That's right.
To begin with, we are not earning anymore, we are just doing some things that will release part of that 11 into our ability to transfer those to projects. So there was a finite number of credits available in the bank, they released them over a 10-year period, based on picking up garbage, controlling invasive species. We did some replanting of depleted vegetation in the point and over behind the shop that was impacted. So all of these things that we've done to improve the habitat within the bank allowed the IRT to release these credits over this 10-year period. We actually haven't realized, I think, Years Seven and Years Tens credits, because we were busy selling them instead of working on the property, and so we ran ourselves basically out of credits that were available for transfer. We weren't out of credits, we just didn't have them available for transfer. This work that we're doing is going to release the final 4.074 credits, and they will then be available for transfer.
That's a perfect explanation, I just want to make sure everyone understood.
Yeah, thanks, sometimes it's hard to get all that out there. So option three, which would be to purchase three Ocean Shores parcels of land with an option for a fourth, from Forterra Northwest, a nonprofit land conservancy. These parcels contain compromised wetland and buffer that could be remediated to produce mitigation for city projects. Indications, I walked these parcels with the Department of Ecology, and based on their cursory walk-through of these parcels, they're thinking there is likely enough mitigation opportunity to offset the impacts of the fire break project. Forterra had acquired the project, or, excuse me, Forterra had acquired the properties for land conservation purposes, Forterra is an environmental group that puts land under a conservation trust, and, you know, sets them aside in perpetuity, with prospective funding from the state that would preclude wetland mitigation credits. So basically, Forterra owns this land today, and they know that the city needs wetland credits. They're willing to sell these properties to the city, and it's my understanding, based on their, they have recently had an appraisal done, below market cost, just to keep them in a wetland trust. I don't think they have a preference one way or the other, they like the idea that we could possibly benefit by utilizing credits out of some remediation in these sites. So we've had discussions, Forterra is willing to forego the state funding. If Forterra gets their state funding and puts these three large parcels into trust, then those three large parcels will never, never again be available for mitigation, to produce mitigation credits for projects. So Forterra is willing to not put them in, you know, seek that state grant and put it into a trust and sell the properties to the city, if that would help for offsetting impacts to the fire break. If the council decides to pursue this option, the next step would be to have an outside firm undertake a wetland study to determine the number of mitigation credits that these properties could potentially generate. Like I said, my walkthrough and conversations with the Department of Ecology indicate that with advanced mitigation measures involving creating high-function habitat beyond simple restoration of the degraded areas, would create a fair amount of wetland mitigation credits. The parcels could potentially, and I say this without knowing the exact level, and this is just based on my conversation with Ecology, these parcels could produce potentially more credits for other city projects. If we had a surplus within this, the more we do to remediate the damaged wetlands in there, the more credits can get produced, and if you do advanced mitigation measures, then they give you a higher credit return from your efforts. That would have to be fleshed out and confirmed through a delineation and remediation planning of those parcels. The total cost of these is a variable, the three lots that we're currently talking about is. that we're currently talking about is, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. All four lots, they have an option on a fourth lot that they have extended their feasibility period until the, the city, um, makes a formal decision whether we want to pursue this option or not. Forterra's, um, preference would be to sell all four lots. Uh, remediation cost is unknown in this option. Uh, the option would likely be the most expensive of the three, but would address the uncertainty of option one. The council should also recognize that option three costs would be offset from the sale of Weatherwax credits uh, to private developers that would still be available, uh, by not having selected option number two. Uh, the advantage to option number three, it preserves the credits in the Weatherwax mitigation bank for private land development in ocean shores. Uh, currently, the planning department has a backlog of development, uh, waiting for credits to be released so that they can start their projects. Um, my planner gave me a number somewhere around fifty the other day. And, and based on my looking at wetlands within the city, there, there are, you know, numerous beyond that fifty that are going to require some sort of mitigation to be able to develop. The option also preserves that capacity of undeveloped parcels to become developed parcels and add to the assessed value of the city. Uh, the disadvantage, this is likely the most costly of the options with, uh, unknowns that will need to be resolved by the wetland study noted above. The credits generated utilizing this option would only be transferable to city projects. So if the city were to purchase these four properties and do the remediation and generate credits in there, we could not transfer those credits to, um, to private property for development, um, like we do out of the Weatherwax mitigation bank. We, we have the ability in the bank to transfer credits to private parcels. If we were to exercise option three and tie up these four large lots and do the remediation on those, it would only be available for, um, for city projects or government projects. This is similar to what the Washington State Department of Transportation does. They bar, buy, um, you know, tracts of compromised wetlands or areas that were uh, either logged or, or they damaged the habitat somehow, they remediate that stuff and then they use that for their own projects.
Sorry, can I just jump in? You just, you did a great job of explaining that and the fact that we can't use it for private use. But op, option three, so to me, if we were having this discussion with council, it breaks down into three different sub-options. Option A is we purchased the one piece of property that's still in private hands, not yet in Forterra's possession for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And do we have any estimate whatsoever as did the number of credits that might give us at this point?
No, we don't. I happen to know that that, um, that property was involved in a remediation, uh, effort several years ago, um, when a violation occurred on that property. And I, but I don't know what the quality of restoration was and what kind of credits could be realized from that. I, I, it would be my thought that that single lot would not have the credits required to do, um,
The whole project.
Entire project.
Right. But that's, that's an option A for the council to consider. If we could get two point five out of it, then we could use one point five from our own bank for the fire break. Put everything else aside for our private development. Option B of three B would be we, the seven hundred thousand purchase, uh, we buy just the three lots. Um, and if we bought just those three lots, again, same question, uh, and estimate is the number of credits is that? Do we have that? Do we not have that?
That's, that's still an unknown, unknown, but the, um, indications are from the Department of Ecology that they're, they would work with us to make sure we squeeze enough credits out of that for, for the fire break project.
Okay. And then option, just for total transparency sake, option C of three would be we buy the one parcel that's still in private hands and we buy the other three lots, uh, for, that are owned by Forterra. That takes us to eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, getting close to a million. And it's the same kind of, uh, to paraphrase Donald Rumsfeld, the unknown unknowns. Um, we still don't know exactly how many credits we would get for that. And the only reason I bring that up is because we are somewhat under the gun on some of this to make a decision. And we're going to be making a decision somewhat in the dark, it seems, if we go down this road. Is that correct? Is that my interpretation?
Uh, not totally in the dark, but, but not, you know, totally fleshed out either.
That's, yeah. I just want everyone to know that.
We have a ninety day, we have, uh, they, they were able to extend their, um, their purchase feasibility period, um, another ninety days, uh, from last week, so.
Do you think we could have more evidence within ninety days of exactly the number of, not exactly, roughly the number of credits we would acquire? For all three of those options.
Yeah, it would involve, um, getting a biologist in there to, to give us that. And, um, the, the next effort that we are embarked on, we have an RFQ out currently, um, to do the, uh, to do the delineation of the fire break to determine, you know, how many credits we're going to need.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's the need. The other thing that this, uh, option three, you know, I'm, I'm not just thinking about the fire break project, but, you know, there's been discussions about a High Dune Trail or.
Yep, exactly.
Other, you know, I mean, if we were to try to site a tsunami tower or something like that in a critical area, we, we almost ended up there with our last one. Uh, those, those kinds of city projects, um, option three, you could use credits out of option three if we could generate some surplus um, to offset those without, you know, hampering private property development.
And, and this is where I honestly believe the continuation of a second High Dune Trail, if we were to take it south, would probably be extremely difficult without this option, without purchasing some of this, right?
Yeah.
It's not impossible.
Yeah, they're just, we, we just don't have a, a tremendous amount of mitigation opportunities that present themselves. This is probably going to be one of the largest opportunities, if not the largest opportunity, um, to purchase credits or to purchase, you know, property that has some remediation value to it.
Okay. And then a final question, and not to put you on the spot, because I can't remember myself. When we built the High Dune Trail, do you remember how many credits we used to build that?
Uh, it was, it was just a little bit over one, like one, one point one or something like that.
Okay, one point one.
Just kind of what.
And the fire break?
I have that. Hang on.
Again, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, that's, that's fine. I've got.
They're important questions to know, so we can kind of extrapolate.
Okay, so, um, the, uh, let's see, this is, nope, this is the airport. So, so I don't have the.
We, we can come back and, and email that information to council. I just.
Yeah, I'm assuming this will be a longer conversation, um, but, but this is kind of an introduction to it and, and we'll get more details, um, as, as we need.
And then it's true, the council asked the question, we don't really have a picture of the, the properties, the four properties in question. I know where they are. I've seen them, but they don't. So can you tell us how much land we're talking about there?
Um, the, the, they're approximately five acres each. They're down there in the south end of Ocean Shores adjacent to the, um, uh, adjacent to the game preserve, the wildlife preserve down towards the wastewater treatment plant.
All right.
Is that?
Yeah. You got more you want to, uh, share with us? One more? Option four?
Oh, yeah, I do. So option number four is going to go along with, um, with any of the other options. We're going to, we're going to exercise this in every wetland project we do. It's intended as a supplement, um, and that is the, um, eradication of invasive species. Um, we've got a fairly, uh, decent infestation of, uh, Scotch broom. We have some minor infestations of, of gorse. Because I worked around that stuff when I was in the utilities, I've eradicated as much of that as I could, but I, I still know where there's a couple of plants floating around town. Uh, evergreen and holly and blackberry are also, uh, on the county's, uh, the extensions list of invasive species. Uh, the yellow flag iris, I happen to know that there are some infestations of that out in the interdunal wetland system. And this is something that, um, so on, on this thing here, uh, the advantages of this option is it's a relatively low cost. Volunteers can be utilized to perform, uh, some of the removal. There's, uh, benefit to the natural environment by reducing the amount of seed being distributed to the critical areas. The, the disadvantage to this, um, based on my discussions, is there's a relatively low credit offset. But even if it's a low credit offset, it's still, you know, depending on how we do the work, it's almost free. So, and it's something that will benefit the environment regardless of which of the other options we look at.
And I know this is the last time I'll interject on this.
No, you're, you're fine.
And I can't even remember if we've talked to council about this or not, but we do have also a plan to do that in conjunction with the purchase of a biochar kiln. Um, and that, that kiln will allow us to eradicate Scotch broom in a way we cannot do it today. So that will allow us, you know, potentially there's even twenty-five acres of Scotch broom down at the marina. With that purchase, we can, we can burn it right there on the spot. It produces a safe smoke that's not harmful to the environment. And we can also use that in the creation of the fire break. Uh, any of those species, we can use it for, for that. So that is something that we're looking at that would aid this entire process along.
Yep, that is the added bonus.
All right, uh, council, any questions or comments? Yes, Richard?
So this whole conversation, and I appreciate the work that you've put into it, but you might've been speaking German for me because I don't know what a credit equals in landmass. Uh, is there an equivalence to a credit and an acre?
Yes, uh, one credit equals one acre.
Now, a lot of that makes a lot more sense to me.
Right. Okay, sorry, but I, I probably should have started out with that. Sorry about that.
Well, so, so if I recapture for me, uh, with all of these options, we're talking about acquiring four acres of mitigatable wetlands. Is that kind of the ballpark?
Well, we're, we're looking at, um, acquiring, uh, either fifteen or twenty acres, um, of, of wetlands that need to be remediated. The, the total quantity isn't unknown at this point. It depends on how, the, the interdunal wetlands of the city of Ocean Shores are some of the most, um, critical habitat on the west coast. It doesn't exist anywhere else. The only place you get an interdunal wetland is behind the primary and secondary dunes of the Pacific Ocean or the Gulf states. So Washington State Department of Ecology is very adamant about protecting that. And if we can recreate some of that in these other parcels, then it's a high-value wetland restoration.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
So, so I have a, I, I barely understand what goes on with the mitigation land bank. My concept is I've got a, 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 a ten-foot pond in the middle of my backyard and I want to grow grass back there. So I need to buy ten feet of, of mitigation at land bank. And then I can fill my pond in, uh, and, and put grass in it. It, is that kind of a rough idea of how this works?
That is a, that is a rough idea. So let me, let me kind of walk you through a mitigation for an average wetland or a buffer encumbered lot, um, say down in the south end of Ocean Shores. I typically try to get at least sixty percent of any given parcel that's encumbered by wetland or wetland buffer to be usable land by the, by the owner, uh, and then preserve forty percent. Forty percent of a, of a lot is really close to the amount of setbacks that would be, um, imposed on the lot just under general land use. So if I can get them sixty percent and, um, and preserve forty percent, that demonstrates that I have tried to avoid and, um, or minimize the impacts to the critical area. And those two things are the first two things that the Department of Ecology expects when we, um, put a lot under mitigation. The, the order of mitigation is, is three, three steps. Avoidance, number one, um, minimization, number two, and then mitigation, uh, as the third option. And that's the least preferred option, but in Ocean Shores with our small lots, it's almost the only option in a lot of cases if you're going to allow a, an owner to develop sixty percent of their parcel. So once we've got that, that hammered out, we determine how many square feet the unmitigated or the unavoidable, uh, impacts are, and then they purchase credits to offset, uh, that amount of impact.
So, and my math is not that, that fast, but if I had, if I had fifty square feet of wetlands on my property and it's the only place that I could put that corner of the house, then I'd have to buy the equivalent of fifty square feet of wetlands mitigation. Do I use that terminology correctly?
Yeah, that would be correct.
And, and so just ballpark, so I can kind of make sense, what would that fifty square feet cost me? Just a, a wild.
So the, the square footage, um, under current pricing, um, at seventy dollars, uh, per seventy thousand dollars an acre, uh, it's about a dollar thirty-one per square foot. That's going to go up to two dol, or a dollar seventy-one a square foot. It's going to go up, uh, by a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, um, to two dollars and thirty-one cents a square foot. So I can't do the math that fast in my head tonight.
And I can't.
But, but two dollars and thirty-one cents a square foot, let's look at what our housing costs have done for flooring and for roofing and stuff like that. It's not that much of an adder, um, for most people. Most of the, um, uh, most of the cost for an average mitigation project, um, you'll see in the ledger is, uh, less than ten thousand dollars. In some cases, it's low as, uh, fifteen hundred dollars or something like that.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I just want to say too, one of the things, it's also dependent on the quality of wetland. What's your category? What are you disturbing? Are you a one, two, three, or four? Because fours have lesser amount than a one. One is your most pristine, four is not. So there's so many variables when you talk about wetlands, mitigation and banks and credits that, you know, obviously a thirty minutes isn't good, isn't going to give us a good education. And I think, um, again, I think Mr. Dooley brought up the, maybe it, it, it might be a good topic for a town hall. Just for anybody that's interested in learning more about what goes into that.
Yeah, I could absolutely bore the community to tears.
All right, thank you.
I'm game. Yeah.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, Rich, why don't you go ahead? Since Richard's had a few questions.
So just, uh, mathematically, hypothetically, on this twenty-acre parcel, it's going to be potentially in different categories of wetlands or borders or, or whatever the terminology is. And, uh, tonight, did we talk about the lowest level being at seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah, so, so the, um, the wetland category that exists on these parcels, um, is going to be a category one or a category two, which are the two highest valued wetlands. And, and that's the interdunal wetland systems of our peninsula.
So we spend hypothetically, we spend around nine hundred if things work out. We don't lose money. We might actually make a million dollars or so possibly, but we've got expenses to get there. But it, but it at least then gives us a bank to borrow from to do other.
Yeah, what, so, so this particular option is a long-term payback as opposed to, um, a short term. We're going to spend a ton of money upfront. And, and what that does is that preserves the, um, the Weatherwax bank for private property development. And once those properties are developed and they're paying on a, you know, three or a four hundred thousand dollar home, the taxes, the payback to, to the city comes in the form of assessed value. So that, that's a hard one for me to just quantify, you know, how long that would take.
May I ask where we get the money for the upfront purchases, if that's what we choose to do? What, what?
We haven't even looked at that, Rich.
So, I mean.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting to hear from Long Beach before we go to.
But hypothetically, is it general fund money or is it there are other pools of money that we have in the city that, I mean?
It's probably, I'll defer to finance. I'm guessing it's general fund money if we go down that road, because I don't think we have anything.
I've been asking that the whole time. Everybody's been talking.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything budgeted for it.
No, it, it's, it's, it's general fund money.
It's not, it's not a budgeted expense. It's, it's, we're just realized that, um, now, the question is, yeah, can we make it back if we buy even, you know, if, let's just say we could buy the one that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I'm just putting this so that people understand it. We can buy the one, and let's say it gives us, you know, two and a half credits. Let's just be optimistic, hopefully. And, and the fire break costs us three and a half, so we have to use one of our own. But we've just raised the prices of the ones that we're going to sell.
That's correct.
So we're, we still have the ability to make money by selling those credits, because those are still ours and we can still sell them to private developers. And when you have, when developers can now build a home on a lot, because they can use all sixty percent of it, um, that is money that comes back in the form of tax revenue.
Yeah, your, your short-term payback on this is going to be the credits that we have left in the bank, we'll be able to sell those at a higher price. And then to add to that short-term payback, we'll have the long-term payback of assessed value increases of the properties that would be undevelopable otherwise.
All right, um, Lisa wants to go. Richard, did you want to talk?
I just wanted to ask too, because I don't think most people realize when you're establishing a bank, there's like a five to seven year period where if you are creating higher quality wetlands, that you have to work with the core and ecology to make sure that they've actually taken, you've done what you've said you're going to do, that it's lasted before. said you're going to do, that it's lasted before you can even use them. So there's also additional timing, you know, and then it's going to be money upfront and it's not going to be readily available for our use until it's signed off on. And then there's maintenance on top of it.
Yeah, so this, this won't function exactly like a bank, um, in, in that, um, with the exception of the delineation work and the remediation work, the advanced mitigation. Then it would potentially be available sooner than, say, the formation of a regular bank. It's, it's a little bit more of a streamlined process than, than a full-on wetland mitigation bank. But it would only be available for public projects or, um, government projects.
All right, thanks. Um, Richard, can, uh, Sarah, go ahead. She had a question and then...
Um, and probably not the smartest of questions, but have, are, is there an inability? Or are we not allowed to look at the properties that the city currently owns?
Uh, no.
Like, like you're talking about purchasing up to 875,000 from, from a company. I mean, the, the city owns some significant properties. I'm wondering, do any of those correlate to something usable and tangible?
Yeah, so the reason we're looking at these properties is they have compromised wetlands on them. They, they used to be pristine wetlands and they've got a haul road, a gravel haul road that ran right through the middle of some of the most pristine part of the property. And, and repairing that is where the value is in, in mitigation. If you have a lot that's already a pristine wetland and you buy that, there's no value. It's already preserved.
All right, Richard.
So one of my priorities as a council member, two of my priorities as a council member, is to extend the High Dunes Trail all the way down to Rainview Drive so we could create a loop. But just as important, or maybe more important, is the fire break all the way from the current fire break behind Hotel Row down to the jetty. As I have interpreted, I hope correctly, that the four acres of mitigation, the four credits of mitigation, will come close to enabling us to build the fire break. I'm wondering, is it conceivable that the fire break could also be used as part of that, uh, extended High Dunes Trail, not so much for viewing the ocean, but as a walking loop or a bicycling loop? Uh, I think that's where it would get its most use. And I may be blurring, but I want to get the most value for...
No, I, I agree, and that's a concept that's on the table. There, there may even be some mitigation value to that by providing a recreational opportunity for the public. So we're, we're going to leverage and pull, pull on all the levers and see what we can squeeze out of this thing. And, um, you know, my, my main discussion tonight is to let you guys know we have some needs. There are some options out there and, uh, you know, I just don't want 10 years from now for these properties to be locked up in a, in a mitigation, or in a, uh, in a trust, in a land trust, and not be able to realize the mitigation value out of them. Because there will be needs going forward. Um, I can assure you that.
All right, Rich, do you have one?
When you sell a credit, where does the city put the money when they receive the money? What account does it go into? Is it also a general fund item?
No, there's actually a mitigation bank.
Yeah, it goes back to the fund, right, of the mitigation bank?
Yeah.
How do we access that money?
We have to pay back the fund in total first, right? And then when the fund is paid back, is this, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I, I believe that, so we're going to, we're going to take some money out of that fund, uh, based on tonight's decision to purchase back a credit. So that's, I, I can't remember what the balance is in there, but, um, but there is money in there sufficient to cover that cost. And then, um, and then there's additional money in there that could be used towards a purchase like this. Um, and then, and then also any credits that we sell, if you guys decide to leave the bank intact and go down, uh, the, you know, the remediation of these, these other parcels, then any money that comes out of the sale of the bank could be used to offset the cost of the investment in the properties.
All right, uh, go ahead, Richard.
I, I think this is my final question, uh, and it's clear to me that you probably know more right now about this whole mitigation process than I will ever in my lifetime know or understand. But my question is, uh, based on what you know right now and recognizing what, uh, Mr. Anderson said, that, that, uh, there's a lot of unknown unknowns, but based on what we know right now, is, do you favor any one of these plans that you put forward based on your knowledge and experience? Uh, that gives me a springboard that I can do more research or, 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 you know, whatever, and lean towards, this may make more sense when I have to make a vote as a council member.
So my goal tonight was put so much information in front of you guys that, that you would be able to make that decision. You know, if, the, the purpose of the mitigation bank, um, was to provide for, for mitigation of the private properties, so I hate to take that away from them and, and burn it up on the fire break if we have another opportunity. But if it, if it turns out that there's just not the finances or, or the desire to go down, um, option three route, then, you know, you, you guys have a tough decision to make. I just want to make sure that you know the consequences of each one of these decisions, the pluses and the bene- and the, and the minuses and, and how it could shape out. I don't want people 10 years ago dragging my name through the mud.
All right, uh, go ahead, Lisa Gribble.
Thank you for all this information. When you presented the information, it, it seemed like because your role in, in our city that it's about property development and providing for property development. If the goal was to actually preserve wetlands and preserve the natural environment, which, but knowing that we need to have a fire break to preserve the current homes and protect the homeowners and property that's down there. But if our goal was to actually preserve nature and wildlife, which of these options would you recommend?
Well, that's, that's a pretty tough question. Um, the option number three creates pristine wetlands where right now they're degraded. I don't know if they were left in Forterra's hands, if they would do remediation on that or if that would be part of putting it into the land trust. But either way, we're, one of the other things that we can, that we can try to leverage as we design this fire break is if there's some areas in there that we can enhance the habitat there as we go through and convert vegetation from woody debris to, um, to the herbaceous type stuff. You know, we, we can potentially make things better out there by going through the fire break. And, and like I said, I am pulling on all the levers trying to make this machine move. It's a difficult task. I mean, public health and safety is a huge priority for, for this administration and, and me as a, as a leader in the planning department. If we could go down through there and, and, and go through some other creative mitigation means, I've been, uh, exploring every option, you know, that I can to minimize impacts to the citizens, but still preserve and follow the rules of the state and the federal government. So, um, it's, it's a daunting task, but, um, we have, I, I've at least to date, I've got these three options with a fourth, um, supplement that will get us partway there, if we decide on which way we want to go.
All right, uh, Denise.
Yeah, I, I had a question because it sounds like, uh, option one, uh, what, what's the timing for even knowing whether option one is available in terms of purchasing from Longview?
Um, I, I'm expecting, uh, a response from the IRT from the Long Beach Bank, um, you know, within two or three weeks. There were some people that were off on vacation and other things that came up. We, the, the operator of the bank was on vacation and then one of the members of their IRT was on vacation. So, um, that option could, um, could be fleshed out, you know, within a couple of weeks. I'll pass that on as soon as I get that information. I don't, I don't have a lot of hopes that that, I mean, that's, that's kind of a, a long shot for us, I think.
It's a, it's a great option for us.
It's the best option.
Pushing, and I'm pushing for it and we've been doing everything we can, but it is the same way. It's, it's outside that, we're outside their area and so it, it may not come to fruition.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. Well, that just means that we're down to option two to three, well, when we don't have that. Uh, I think what would be helpful, at least for me, uh, I feel like Richard too, being overwhelmed, uh, by all of the information, that, uh, seeing some kind of financial analysis of each of the options would be really helpful in order to make a decision, whether it's short-term gain or long-term gain.
And I believe we have, and this is a problem, this is our problem. We have 90 days or so that we've asked them to keep that property available to us. Does Forterra have a hard deadline for if we can't come up with the funding, we're going to move forward? With putting it in, in the trust?
Yeah, they didn't give me a, a hard deadline, knowing that tonight's council discussion was coming up. I think they're going to be, you know, looking for some sort of a nod that yes, we would like to pursue your option or it's just outside of the cards.
And is that something they want to hear in the next 90 days, in the next week?
Well, I would think within the next, yeah, I, so their grant, um, their grant application for, um, Washington State to convert this to a trust, to a conservation trust, doesn't happen for outside of that 90-day period. So we have time on, uh, on the three lots, the, the three larger lots. Uh, the fourth lot has a 90-day extension. So we've got that 90 days to kind of play with some numbers. The, the thing that I would like to, you know, get you guys a little more comfortable with is what is the potential?
Exactly.
Mitigation and, and what is that remediation going to cost us?
And so do we need to do an RFP like we're doing with the fire break and put one out immediately to try to get at least some preliminary numbers? If we bought this, this would give us eight credits as opposed to if we bought it, it would give us three? Could we get that information in time? Because that's really the key missing piece. At least if I were on sitting on council, that was what I would want to know. Um, and I know we're under the gun and it's not our fault we're under the gun. Uh, it's, it's Forterra moving forward on their own. So would we have time to find that, that, to get an answer for that or at least a somewhat plausible answer to it?
So I tried getting, um, Zach from the Department of Ecology to join us tonight to, he gave me kind of a warm fuzzy feeling that those three parcels, um, would, would likely. He said, he made the comment that he would, he would work with us to make sure that we had enough credit yield out of that, um, to take care of the fire break without saying it's got enough credit yield to do the fire break. And, and I think they have the ability to, you know, to...
So that's a million-dollar fire break. I think if we could get triple that, if we could get nine credits out of it and then we could do a dune trail and a fire break, it's, it's a worthwhile investment. If it's just going to buy us the fire break and I'm sitting on council as a council member, that's going to give me, you know, that's not, that's a very, very expensive fire break. And I realize again, it's total life, health, safety, but it may not be the option we want to go with. I'm just saying that.
So the other, the other thing that I would try to provide you guys, um, in the, in the follow-up discussions here is, so we've got that and it's not going to be, you know, a $900,000 or a million dollars of remediation work. You've got the construction effort of the fire break, depending on how that ends up going. But if, if we, if we preserve the credits in the mitigation bank and sell those to private property development, what is the payback time period? What is the, you know, when are we going to realize that payback on the, on the, uh, on the savings? So how, how fast through assessed values going up, are we going to be able to take some money out of the general fund and pay back this money that we're purchasing property with?
Right.
You know, is that a five-year payback, a 10-year payback?
Exactly.
And what is your guys' threshold for paying there?
I mean, I've watched the assessment in Ocean Shores, it's doubled since I've been here, right? Our valuation has doubled since I've been here. So if, if that allows us to build out X number more of our lots, the question is what is that X?
So, so if I've got 50 lots at a half a million dollars apiece or, um, you know, $350,000 apiece, because that's kind of the range we're in, um, you know, that's a pretty good chunk of money. You know, three and a half million bucks for every 10 lots we develop over a period of time. So, and they develop fairly quick once we can move them through a reasonable use exception hearing and get a mitigation sales agreement going.
Right, anybody else? Yes, Richard?
So this whole conversation for me has been a lot like drinking from a fire hose. Uh, but I'm finally through the conversation, getting my, my mental, uh, coat hooks to grasp some of what you've said. And my question is, so the Fortura that you have been talking about, is that mostly tied to the option one or did I?
The, the Forterra properties are tied to option three.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready to move on? Okay, thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall, that was...
It was, uh, there's a lot of information to digest.
There is, and, and there's more to come.
You printed it all up for everybody, so I appreciate that.
All right, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
And, uh, next, uh, item here is a discussion on, uh, council guidelines and it's led by Mayor Protem Lisa Scott.
Thank you, and I know there was a comment and no, um, no public comment tonight. If this does ever go anywhere, it'll come back. We'll have plenty of public comment. But in the, um, I just want to say I really appreciate all of the work that the group did for our council guidelines. And I think with any document, it's a living and breathing document. Um, some of the things that, um, I've just gone through and noticed on, through our public comment and then also, uh, also during public comment, the committee reports that come forward. And some of the things that I just would like to, to maybe talk about and see if anybody else has any traction. Um, when we have like the CIC come in or the library come in or, um, well, the Alzheimer's group, sorry, I can't remember the name, but they had come in and they, they went under other reports. I would like to see those committees come into other reports. Get a hold of the, um, get a hold of the clerk, get it added to the agenda under other reports. It's not really a public comment as much as you're informing us as what's going on as your committee. That was one thing. The other thing is, in, in granted, last, last council meeting in particular was quite long. But what happened was it took us so long to get to city business that we're paying staff to be here. We're paying overtime and, um, and, and they're getting paid overtime by the hour. And we're keeping them here long hours. Also, we had a consultant here to talk about, um, our bars, numbers in our budget and cleaning that up. The meeting ran so long that not only are we paying her by the hour, we also had to put her up in a hotel room overnight. I've always viewed public comment is, yes, I, I want to hear from people, but, but we're here to conduct city business. And sometimes those comments aren't necessarily having to do with what we have on the agenda. So the reason I wanted to have this discussion is, one, to see if we can get the groups to come in under other reports first and foremost. And then second, I would like to add, not take away, but add a final public comment at the end of the agenda, kind of like for a good of the order. So if it's something pertaining to city business on the agenda, talk to us in the beginning, let us know. But at the end, we're here to listen to you. Let us get through the business, but at the end, come address anything you want. And that's kind of where I was coming from with maybe wanting to make a couple of tweaks to the guidelines. Not to take away any of the work that's done, but to maybe add that additional public comment at the end. And I'm going to open that up for anybody else that wants to call.
Anybody got a comment about that? I was going to say, maybe somebody else should go first. Allison, yes?
Um, I, I agree with the committee reports, um, going in under other because it, it, it's odd to me when we have some groups come and they are presenting like CIC in three minutes and then we have other groups that come and there is no time limit. So I think for all of those committees, it would be great if they came in under other reports because they typically speak once a month, I believe. Um, public comment at the end, that was the whole thing that was brought to us in council guidelines is moving public comment up to earlier in the meeting. So, um, I'm not real sure about that one. So you want to have two public comments?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And how, how will you determine who gets to speak at the first public comment and who has to wait till the last public comment?
Well, I think if you have an agenda item or if you're, the first public comment should be for agenda items only.
But don't they do public comment, um, on that agenda item?
Not necessarily, like if we have a discussion item or anything, no.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to, you know, be respectful of our staff's time and the amount of money that we're spending. that we're spending to keep them here, as well as the consultants. I'm just trying to be mindful of that. If it's, there's not enough traction, I'm good with not amending.
Denise wants to go, is that all right? All right, go ahead, Denise.
Like, like Allison, I was on the, the council guidelines, and we, we did talk about when public comment should take place. And right now, we, we purposely have it at the beginning for people to give whatever they are interested in. And absolutely, it says that we're here to do business, and we ask for people to talk about city business. We actually ask them, if you look at the council guidelines, to contact us ahead of time, to contact, you know, the council by email, by phone, with their, with their issues. But right now, it is defined for things that are not on the agenda. I, I agree with having reports. I think that's, that's a good idea, having the, the reports have a, a separate section. For items that are on the agenda, I think it really helps to have the discussion after the agenda item, because we often have presentations about the topic. And for people to comment after they hear those presentations, gives them more information. I think if we have non-agenda items at the end of the meeting, like tonight, frankly, I, I think it seems punitive for the people who want to talk.
Yes, Richard?
So I absolutely agree that other reports, all of those, CIC and all of those things belong to other reports. The, there were several public comments earlier in this session that talked about the existing council guidelines, and the focus of public comments should be relevant to the city. And so, public comments that are not relevant to the city, they may be more appropriate during a council chat session, for example, rather than during a council meeting. Pardon, well, so, so that's a legal thing, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'll go with the lawyer says. But I absolutely like the idea of having the opportunity of, what I said in the audience for years before I was on the council, so many times, things were brought up during the council discussion, and I knew an answer that nobody on the council knew. And I would have, I begged on a couple of occasions to be able to, to voice my knowledge, and this vehicle would then allow, whether the, something that was said during the council discussion triggered somebody's thought and said, oh, you know, let me add this to the conversation. I like that idea. I don't want to take away from public comment. So if I understand what you're saying, our public comment format would remain the way it is now. We would have the public comment at the beginning, agenda comments, but then you're adding the opportunity to speak to an issue that has already been discussed at the end of the meeting. I think that's, or, or anything else. I frankly like that idea. I, I was, I was, my, I had an erroneous opinion, I'm not sure how it got formed, that this discussion was to eliminate the public comments at the beginning. And, and I'm a hard no on that, but, but as you have formulated, and I understand, yeah, I, I kind of liked that idea. But I also like the idea of, of, well, respecting the freedom of speech, but let's keep public comments on subject, and, and on city business. But I would also like to add just a, a, a personal thought, that so often, we have, we, we receive an email, and we've all read the email, and then the sender of that email gets up and reads the email during the public comment section. And we've already, we've already heard that message. Is there value, or is it a freedom of speech issue to say, we've already heard that message? I'm not sure I'm framing this very well. But if it came across, if, 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 if the council was already addressed in an email, is there any value in re-listening to that, to somebody reread that, that email?
Honestly, yes. I think because, you know, maybe someone didn't get the email in time or read it, and they're here addressing us, and sometimes the power of speech in person is much more impactful than reading it, for some people.
And I appreciate, because I'm, I'm floundering, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get enough, you know, to hang a, you know, to hang an ID on.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think when, when they're emailed to us, we get them. But the people in the audience don't get them. So that's why a lot of people will send us the email and then come and read it to us, I think. The other thing I was thinking about, when we have those people who are coming in from out of town, and nobody lives close when they come in from out of town, for any of our agenda items, that we try and get them at the beginning of the agenda. Because I know with, our person that was here before, that, that item was farther down the agenda. So we can try and get anybody who's got to travel, get them at the beginning of the agenda.
Go ahead, Rich.
And that's what agenda setting is for. It's really easy to say, hey, let's make sure we come up front. You talked about other reports. It's probably just me, but I feel the only people or groups that should be under other reports are truly city-related commissions or committees. I'm not personally uncomfortable with non-city committees to have their three minutes at the speaker. We, we could make up, we know so many different committees, not to pick on them, it could be the Elks, or the Eagles, or, or the Moose, or whatever, whatever. Yeah, they, they need their three minutes, I think, at the speaker. But true city-related commissions or committees, they deserve to have that desk with the time necessary, and some back and forth with council.
All right, go ahead, Denise.
Yeah, I agree. If we need to, you know, amend or change to the council guidelines, and obviously, it is a living document. That, that's the whole purpose of it, is to make us function better. So if we need to make those changes, but, but I, I do think we need to define what those committees or, or commissions are, that would be part of the reports. And I just want to clarify, because Lisa, you initially said that at the beginning, people could only talk about agenda items. So i- is that what we're talking about?
I think it was twofold. I think it was the other reports, also with Elks or Eagles or something, they can come under presentations. However, but yeah, I was thinking on, you know, and I, I realize we have agenda items, and you, you do have public comment on the majority of them. But really, just trying to get to the heart of the business at the first public comment. So yeah, I was really aiming those towards agenda items, and then at the end, having it, you know, to either rediscuss what, what came up, maybe something triggered their mind, and then just to talk to us about anything. That's kind of where I was coming. But if there's not any, you know, that's just some of the observations I've made since we've been doing this, and there may not be merit to it, but I just wanted to bring it up for conversation.
Well, I was just wondering if there is a way for us to make it stronger, to encourage people that we are talking about city business when we're talking about public comment, a- as an alternative.
What, what the mayor reads, it actually says it's agenda items, which I'm not sure really
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading your guys' document, and that's what it says. It's supposed to be about city business.
But there's always the argument that has come up, that even at the last council meeting, there were people that believe that the national politics are city business, and they do play a role. And I'm, I don't, I'm not trying to pick on any group or individual, but it's hot in my mind, because it was, we went through a lot of public comment. And that was where I was coming from, because how do you know what they view as city business? Maybe we don't view it that way, but they may. And it was just hard to differentiate, that's all.
Yes, Richard?
I just wanted to say, Allison, thank you, and the way that you framed that, that I didn't make that leap forward, that yes, being able to, to send the email and also read it gets broader, broader coverage, and that does make sense. I just wanted to recant kind of things.
All right, Denise?
So I guess we're looking here for council consensus as to whether we go back and look at the guidelines again or not.
Yeah. Twofold, is there consensus? Do, do you, do you think, as council, we need to change the guidelines, or just let the groups know that they're going to be under other reports? That they don't have to sign up for public comment?
Before we comment on that, I have a question. A, a, a council member, Hartman, talked about groups like the Elks or whatnot, and I'm thinking like the, the hospital or the Grace County.
Presentation.
Okay.
Like the port comes in as a presentation, or, the other reports are more like your, when the library gets up during the public comment, or the CIC, I feel like they deserve a spot at the table.
I do, too.
And that's where I was heading in that, with that.
I, I, I agree with that.
But also technically, CIC is not a city.
No, it's not, but they keep, they keep us in the loop of everything that's going on, and they do receive funding from us through LTAC.
And they're a huge tourist draw, so they, they generate a lot of interest in the city.
I don't know, that, just throwing that out.
All right, so we're going to move forward with this?
That, do you think that that's a change that needs to be amended in the council guidelines?
Yeah, I, I think
I guess that'd be a thumbs up, right?
One, just of one subject, just the one right now, that does warrant it, or if that's just merely letting the groups know.
I think
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think what we need to do is look at, look at the guidelines and get the language in there, because we may not all be here forever. And so that way, moving forward, it would, it would be memorialized in that document.
So that's item one, and then the second one, is, is there even the will of the council that you would like to add a public comment at the end? If there's not?
One more?
Yeah.
I see two.
So two, so that fails.
Out of seven.
So then, should we, do you want this to come back to the council, or to the next meeting, to assign a group just to look at adding the additions for other reports and presentations?
I think you could put an ad hoc committee together and do that.
Couldn't we, couldn't we use the same committee, ad hoc committee, that wrote the guidelines we have now?
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Is it just as simple as the city clerk telling people they're going to be
That's, that's why I was asking. Well, that's what I asked. Is it necessary to change the documents or not?
It's just direction.
It looks like a one-line change, and, and I'm not even sure you need
That's why I was asking the question.
It's, it's a one-line change, and, and have somebody on the committee draft that one line, give it to Sarah, and Sarah give it back to us and say, do we approve?
Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
All it says now in the council guidelines is other reports. So I think it is just a matter of assigning people to other reports.
All right, that'd be that simple.
The only thing I was going to say is that if you were going to make a change and define, if you're going to define it by city, it should say that. If you're going to say specifically people like CIC, or whatever, because what happens when the Elk sends us an email and says, we want to do a presentation, and what, I mean, do you just automatically allow it? Secondly, to save us time on amendments and stuff like that, it would be very nice if the city would, or if the council would put in the guidelines, this is the, this is the way the council meeting will go, unless a consultant or whatever is present, which gives us the ability, like I could have put Tara at the, at the top, knowing that she's traveled three hours to be here, you know what I mean? And it wouldn't take an amendment every single time. We are governed by your guys' resolution, where it goes ordinance, resolution, request, even the complete layout. That's what requires us to obtain an amendment every single time we want to move something around. So it would, it would be worth it to put in that, a paragraph that says, you know, in the event of the administration can do X. Either way, it's going to be presented to you to approve, and so there'll be a reason behind it, and you'll either say yes or no. But it would be nice if something was in there and it didn't require an amendment any, every time. That would, in itself, save time.
So Sarah, can you, I just asked the mayor, he said it was okay. Could you work with the ad hoc committee and bring something back?
Yep.
To us, no, no time for, you know, it doesn't have to be next council meeting, but thank you. Are you all comfortable with that? Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Lisa Gribble.
Can someone just remind me who's on the ad hoc committee, including our council members? I don't think I am. Council members and community members?
Yeah. Denise and I were the council members, and Jane, and Joe DeVore, and Rick Beveridge were the community members, right?
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, and, and is it okay that community members are, it sounds like one of, at least one of them is the current, is going to be a city employee? No, not the way we decided tonight.
Oh, Rick, Rick.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
I was on it, too. So I
Yeah, Sarah was on it.
Right, but Sarah wasn't listed as a community member. She was on it because she is a city employee. So I just want to clarify, is that's okay, or do we want to open it up to another community member, just to be transparent?
I think it's small enough that we could just have two or three council members work on it and be done with it, without community member on it. But that's your guys' decision. Yes, go ahead, Allison.
I know, I'm talking a lot tonight. I, I think Denise and I could sit down and probably with Sarah and have the language knocked out in about five, 10 minutes, I think, because it's minor changes.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
I, I agree. I was going to say that, that Sarah obviously understands what our intent is, and, and she, she could prob, she may be the best suited to draft something and give it to you and Denise, and say, does this fit our, you know, but make it easy. I don't think it needs to be a big deal.
All right, so that's decided. That's the end of that discussion. We have no executive session. Agenda review will be Thursday, July 31st, at 9:00 AM, and it'll be council members Scott, Hartman, and Klein. So now we have good of the order, and we'll start at the other end. So Rich, what do you have?
I will pass, so we can go home.
Richard?
I really appreciate all the work that Marshall put in on his presentation. Thank you.
All right, Allison.
I, I'll just put my list off till the next one, except for one thing. Roy Simmons is, is leaving the city as our inspector, and I just want to say thank you to him, because he has done an amazing job for this city. And he has been a person I have been able to, as a council person, when I've had questions on things, he has always been so quick to respond and explain things and give me information I need. So he will be dearly missed.
Lisa, Scott?
So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I do thoroughly appreciate all the public comments, and I don't want that to come across that I didn't, because I really do. I was just trying to be a little bit more structured to get to city business. But I appreciate everybody's input tonight, and that's why there's seven of us.
All right, Lisa Gribble.
I just want to thank the staff in advance. I know it's going to be a super busy weekend here at the Convention Center, and because our city puts that on, I know all the staff are going to be working really hard on that. So they're here late tonight, and then working really hard this weekend. So thank you.
Tom?
I have nothing.
Denise?
Just wanted to remind people about the events that were talked about. We have Hogwild coming up, National Night Out, Pride Weekend, and also on August 23rd, Airport Appreciation Days.
Airport Appreciation Days. Yes. Library hot dogs next Tuesday.
All right, can I get an adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
All right, we're adjourned.